September sixteenth and the twenty-third. We've had a chance to take a look at it. Is there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the dispersments, council? Okay, hearing none, the chair moves that the dispersals be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay, first on the agenda tonight is a proclamation of Suicide Prevention Month. Madam Secretary, would you please read that into the record, please?
Proclamation, no matter what, you matter, Suicide Prevention Month. Whereas in two thousand twenty-three, nearly forty-nine thousand three hundred Americans died by suicide, a prevalence not seen since the early nineteen forties, with an average of one life lost every eleven minutes. And whereas, across the country, five and a half percent of adults reported serious suicidal thoughts, and more than forty-two percent of U.S. adults personally know someone who has died by suicide, demonstrating the far-reaching impact of this public health crisis. And whereas, in Maryland, six hundred and eight residents died by suicide in two thousand twenty-two, a rate of one suicide death for every ten thousand residents, which represents more deaths each year than from homicides. And whereas, in Talbot County, the reality is urgent. Sixteen point eight percent of middle school students and seventeen point two percent of high school students report having seriously considered suicide, a concerning reminder that this crisis is present in our community. And whereas, too many individuals at risk never receive the care they need due to barriers such as limited access to trained providers, long wait times, and the stigma still surrounding mental health treatment. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby urge all Talbot County citizens to recognize suicide as a significant public health risk, declare suicide prevention and mental health support as a priority, and support the development and availability of accessible behavioral health services for all residents so that no one is left without hope or help. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby declare the month of September two thousand twenty-five as no matter what, you matter Suicide Prevention Month in Talbot County, and urge every resident to take action and check in on the people around them, because even a simple conversation can save a life. Given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this twenty-third day of September in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and second to present into the record. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Okay. Bethany, come on up, you guys.
Do we stand?
No, you can sit, yeah, yeah. You can sit down if you like, yes. Introduce yourselves. Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah.
County Council, I'm Alexa Sipe, Vice Chair of the Board of Trustees of For All Seasons. My colleague, Chair Pepperkai, as you well know, the Superintendent of Talbot Public Schools.
Yeah.
And is also on our Board of Trustees. Thank you for this proclamation. And it seems that September is a month for many things, and suicide prevention being one. For All Seasons is your community behavioral health and crisis center, rape crisis center. We provide therapy, psychiatry, victim and crisis support, education, and outreach to the community. We offer them services regardless of anyone's ability to pay or the language that they speak. With seven offices throughout the mid-shore and telehealth services available statewide, we are committed to ensuring access to care. Through our open access program, anyone can walk in during select hours and meet with a therapist the very same day. Suicide is a critical public health issue that impacts our families, schools, workplaces, and communities. This message of no matter what, you matter, is a reminder that every single person has value and that connection, compassion, and support can save lives. We encourage everyone to check in with the people around you and ask how they are truly doing. Listen with compassion and without judgment, and connect them to support when it's needed. A simple conversation can make all the difference. Feel free to visit our website, forallseasonsinck.org, or call four-ten-eight-two-two-ten-eighteen, and you will have open access to care and the therapy that each and every citizen of Talbot County deserves. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to chime in, just from being on the board.
Could you introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm sorry, Sharon Pepperkai, Superintendent of Schools, but also on the board, going on my second year. And so, I've learned a lot. And in the school system, a lot of times the focus is on the students, but there are a lot of adults in, in the system that also need help and need care. And so, I find myself, when we pass one another and we say, how are you doing? And someone says, okay. I stop sometimes now and say, are you really okay? Are you just telling me that? And oftentimes, I get a lot of stories of, of people, what's going on with themselves, their family members. And so, just from learning a lot about the care that's right here, the availability of helping our citizens, our friends, I've learned a lot. And so, taking more time to have conversations with people instead of the blanket, how you doing, and you're still, you're still going on about your business. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you guys, so, okay. Counsel, no, you can stay here. Yep, yep, stay here, don't, don't go nowhere. Yeah, Bethany, would you like to say a few words? Yeah.
Hi, Bethany Dorman, CEO at For All Seasons. It's so good to see all of you again, and just thank you for once again recognizing the No Matter What You Matter campaign. I do want to just bring to light that our real focus this year is, I'm fine is not the end of the story. And, you know, to what Dr. Pepperkai said about, I'm, you know, how are you doing? I'm okay, are you really? We really often hear people say, I'm fine. And we know that when we dig a little bit deeper and we can create trusted circles of conversation, that makes the difference. And I know, we've all had conversations over the years about how suicide has touched our lives personally, and just, my hope is that this isn't just a September campaign. And I hope that this is a reminder all the time that when you hear someone say, I'm fine, if we just take a couple extra seconds to be able to have a conversation, so much more can be revealed. And, you know, Mr. Stamp and I were having a conversation last week about how we, how we connected during COVID, and we talked about, you know, it's day, I think we were on like day forty-two at that point. And we really have to pay attention that we are still in a time where people are getting back into what normal quote-unquote looks like. And really, there are people that are still working through really massive things. And even if we're just dealing with small things, it all matters.
Mm-hmm.
And so, just to be able to bring the reminder that when we hear, I'm fine, my invitation to everyone here and everyone watching and listening is just send a text, check in on someone, pick up the phone, send an email, just say, I'm thinking of you. Even if you think everything is fine, it's amazing what we might find out when we just check in.
Well, thank you, thanks.
And I'd also like to thank the council for all of the support that you have given for All Seasons these past few years. It has been remarkably impactful. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Step?
As always, it's a pleasure to, to have you guys in and do this. Bethany, I really do like the last point you just made there about, you know, this isn't just a month thing, right? We have a lot of things that we celebrate a day, a week, a year, or a month. It should be twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five, like you mentioned. So, y'all do important work, we appreciate it. And, you know, it's a pleasure to do this again, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say, I'm very proud with what you do. You've been on top of this issue since it's been developing, because it's been a societal issue for a while. And you seem to be one step ahead of it. And we really benefit from that, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Lynn, that means a lot.
So, thank you for coming in and bringing this to our attention again, as you always do. You do great work there at For All Seasons and know that, you know, we're here to cheer you on for all the work that you do and, and the lives that you, you help in the community. But I have one question for you. Have you seen any difference as it relates to suicide regarding AI? So I read an article of a young man who committed suicide. I think he was about sixteen years old, truly broke my heart, where he went on AI and AI instructed him how to commit suicide. So, anything relating to AI and suicide, I, I do see that they have warnings now as it relates to AI. And they do put up the warning about suicide prevention. But have you seen anything in regards to that? Are you doing any type of particular outreach? Or is there a need to do outreach for that?
There absolutely is a need, and we are in conversation about developing. I actually just had a conversation with Dave Whelan at the Talbot Spy about this very thing. If you look at the Harvard Business Review in two thousand twenty-four, AI was used primarily to find information. If you look at two thousand twenty-five, the number-one hit is therapy, the number-two hit is purpose. And that's what we are seeing in terms of AI use. There have been countless articles. The New York Times had an article about a young child who committed suicide. The AI wrote the suicide note for that child. We have to be really mindful that AI is a tool. It's not a replacement for therapy. And that's one of the things that we are starting to dig into. Dave and I are going to be doing a story. We're in our research right now, but within the next couple of weeks, you will see that on the Talbot Spy, because it absolutely has become, you know, for kids especially, when you think about children who are more isolated or who are not comfortable having a conversation. Our children have spent so much more time on screens than we did as adults, and it's safer. AI is not going to argue back with you.
Right.
There's pathways where you can feel comforted, you can find purpose. And so, what we really want to start to do is have the conversation about how AI is showing up, where it's really great. Sometimes, you know, we joke at our office that our friend ChatGPT is helpful when we're trying to figure out something simple. But when we're talking about human lives, AI can't be the answer. And that's the next, that's the next thing that we are really digging into. We work with a wonderful national expert, whose name is Dr. Jeff Thompson, who has come to the community time and again for us. He'll be here again in October to train all of our first responder peer support program participants. And one of the things that we are going to be doing is developing an AI program that he can come back and give to the community, so please stay tuned.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, one more question.
Just one, just one.
Yeah, one more, yeah. So, have you seen any uptick as it relates to federal government layoffs or anything of that nature within our community? Since we had a discussion on federal employment today.
You know, I'm not privy to what folks are walking in the door with once they're behind closed doors with our therapists. I can tell you that we have seen an uptick in adult clients that are seeking financial support. One could conclude that part of that is folks who are losing their job and/or losing insurance. But to answer real plainly, I can't give you that answer off the cuff.
Okay.
But I can certainly follow up and get it to you.
Okay, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, and like I said, like we've said up here, thanks so much. You, you, you three ladies are so important to Talbot County. And we're, we're just so blessed to have your services, you, you know, your commitment. And, and I really appreciate you helping the community with, with us. And, um, thanks so much.
Absolutely.
So, come on up, we got, we got, we got something for you.
Thank you, Beth, I love what you do. Thank you. Uh-oh.
Yep, it's okay, it happens.
No pun intended. Thank you.
Okay, well, really appreciate that, so, okay. Next on the agenda is, help me, Keisha, on this one here, the owl.
Alopecia Awareness Month.
There you go, that's what we got, so. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and, um, put that into the record for us, please?
Proclamation, Alopecia Awareness Month, September two thousand twenty-five. Whereas the National Alopecia Arriata Foundation, NAAF, serves the nearly seven million Americans affected by alopecia areata, an autoimmune disease which causes uncontrollable hair loss, creates feelings of isolation, and increases the risk of depression and self-harm. And whereas, NAAF is the largest nonprofit funder of alopecia areata research, advocacy, and community support in the world, with a forty-plus-year legacy of initiating meaningful change. And whereas, NAAF continues building a community that is empowered with more choices while driving research to advance treatments and to find a cure. And whereas, NAAF's third annual Walk for Alopecia is the finale of Alopecia Areata Awareness Month, once again bringing the alopecia areata community of families, caregivers, friends, coworkers, and healthcare professionals together to help urge research for better treatments and a cure, increase support, advocate for change, and end the stigma associated with this life-changing condition. Now therefore, we, the County Council of Talbot County, do hereby proclaim September two thousand twenty-five as Alopecia Awareness Month, and Saturday, September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, as Eastern Walk for Alopecia Day in Talbot County, and encourage all community members, whether or not personally affected by alopecia areata, to support and participate in this annual walk. Given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this twenty-third day of September in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-five.
Thank you, Madam Secretary, appreciate it. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So second.
Okay, we got a motion, second, to go ahead and put it into the record. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Okay, welcome, doctor.
Dr. Andy Mu born. I am the group site leader for the Eastern Shore Alopecia Area Foundation Support Group here on the Eastern Shore. And I'm also the Walk Site Coordinator for Walk for Alopecia that will be hosted on this Saturday at Idowal Park. So, first let me start by saying thank you to Councilwoman Keisha Hay as well as the Talbot County Council for sponsoring and recognizing September as Alopecia Awareness Month. Your acknowledgement means so much to those of us living with this condition, and it shines a light on often invisible struggle. The National Alopecia Area Foundation, or NAVF, leads a fight to improve the lives of people affected by alopecia areata. They provide education, support, and research funding for treatments, and one day, hopefully, a cure. This mission reminds us that hair loss is not just cosmetic. It impacts emotional health, self-esteem, and daily life. Here on the Eastern Shore, we are proud to have this dedicated Alopecia Area Support Group, and it is virtual. We provide a safe space for children, adults, and families to share their stories, connect with resources, and most importantly, realize that they are not invisible, and they are not alone. Together, we are breaking down stigma and building confidence. This proclamation also connects directly to our community outreach. Again, on September, on September twenty-seventh, this Saturday, from nine-thirty to eleven at Idowal Park, we will host the Eastern Shore's first inaugural walk here for alopecia. This walk is about raising awareness, bringing families together, and standing proudly in solidarity with those affected. It is also about raising funds to support SNAP's critical mission. And it's our hope that this recognition inspires more compassion and more conversation, and have everyone in this room and out in the public to join us at Idowal Park and to learn and to support. Together, we can ensure that no one is facing alopecia and they are feeling unseen and unheard, because it is not just about hair. Let's do something about alopecia. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Step?
I'll stay in the, I'll stay within the thanks vein here. I want to appreciate you being here, but I, I really appreciate the, especially what you, what you just said and what's written in the proclamation here about the, the visible versus the invisible, right? And, you know, focusing especially on, and bringing to light what, what is not seen, you know, in regards to this. So thank you for bringing that to light, and again, appreciate you being here.
Thank you for taking on this cause, and I love your T-shirt. It's not just hair.
Well, Dr. Mu born, I thank you for bringing this to us. This is our first alopecia proclamation. Hopefully, it will not be our last. And I truly appreciate supporting this effort now. Will not be able to be at the walk because of Frederick Douglass Day, unfortunately. But I will be there and sending prayers for all that attend, so thank you so much.
Yep, like my colleague said, appreciate you making us aware of this, and really appreciate the first time, and let's make this an annual thing for you. And make people aware of this, that's for sure, so come on up. Okay, next on the agenda would be an update for the Talbot County Food Pantry Committee Resource Expo. Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Good evening.
Good evening, how are you?
I have one for you to. Thank you. I'm glad we can still wear them at this time of year. Thank you.
Well, we want to welcome you. If you want to introduce yourself, that would be great.
All right. Well, good evening, council members. And I'm here this evening representing the people and the organizations that are hosting the fourth annual Resource Day. It's going to be held Saturday, October eighteenth, at Eastern Elementary School, and it runs from ten AM till one PM. Resource Day, to remind you.
Could you introduce yourself, please?
I'm sorry?
Could you introduce yourself so people know you?
Oh, I beg your pardon.
That's okay, that's okay.
Just plunged right in, okay. I'm Catherine Poe. I'm on the steering committee, and I'll be introducing some of the others who are here tonight for Resource Day. And I'm also the Chair of the Talbot County Hunger Coalition, which is nine food pantries and three meal providers.
Thank you.
But this, tonight, my head is the Resource Day. For those who don't know, Resource Day is basically one-stop shopping for our neighbors in need. It offers them free dental screening, heating assistance, health screening, free children's books, free home repairs, free legal aid, and help for veterans. And that's only some of the fifty, that's fifty, nonprofit organizations and agencies that will be on hand to make a difference. I bet you didn't even know we had fifty nonprofit organizations. We, we really have a lot. And the thing is, people don't know they are there, and the help they can get. We will also have a special playtime for the kids, a bike rodeo that we did last year, that's going to be done again. Free groceries will be given out, as well as personal items and paper goods. Plus, everyone, vendors, volunteers, and people coming through our doors, will also have a free lunch provided by Sedexo and by St. Michael's Community Center's kitchen. And plus, that day, we will also have Spanish interpreters on hand. I want to add a big thanks at this point to the county and Clay Stamp, all right, for allowing the Delmarva Community Transit Bus to be added to Resource Day. This is the first year, because I've always been worried that only people can get there if they walk or if they have, drive a car. But I see so many people who use that transit that could definitely use being at Resource Day. So, thanks to Clay and working with Henry Cheats, who is the head of the bus system. We have set it up that they are going to add us to their schedule on Resource Day, and there will be two drop-offs at Eastern Elementary and two pickups. So that's a big thank you to Clay and to the council, I appreciate it. There's a reason, all right? Such a day is urgently needed, and a look at our statistics are going to show you. And I don't use that word urgently lightly. First of all, this first statistic comes from Feeding America. For those who don't know, Feeding America is the umbrella group of all the food banks in the United States. And they target our county, as they target all counties. And eleven percent of our residents are food insecure, fifteen percent of our children are. That means people are having to skip meals, because they can't afford them. Sometimes one meal, sometimes two, sometimes adults skip a meal so the kids have meals. Let's look at SNAP. All right, and people who don't know what SNAP is, it's what people used to call food stamps, all right? By the way, SNAP payments are pretty low. I mean, it gets such a bad rap, which is ridiculous. First of all, there already was a work requirement, I'd like to point that out. People already between eighteen and sixty-two had to work or had, be in training or taking a college course already before anything else was added to it. I do want to make a correction, though, and, Ali, excuse me if I don't make this correction. And I just found it as I was before, so I couldn't change it on yours. And I had, you see the number, it says how many people are on SNAP. All right, and it says three thousand seven hundred and thirty-three adults. That's total number, not just adults, I'm sorry. So that should say three thousand seven hundred and thirty-three total. Of that total, one thousand four hundred and thirty are children. All right, and that's from our own Department of Social Services here in the county. Each week, all right, our nine food pantries and our three meal providers serve nearly three thousand people every week. That's twelve thousand a month, that's a hundred and forty-four thousand people a year. And you should understand, our pantries are all over the county, down to Tillman, all right, out to Trap. And a lot of people are shocked, we have one out at Chesapeake College. All right, called Corner of Care, all right? At this point, I would like to give a shout-out, by the way. Let me, I'm skipping a part, and I've got to talk about money. The cost for the larger food pantries that serve, and by the way, these larger food pantries are serving several hundred a week. It rains from eight thousand to ten thousand a month. Just multiply that time, twelve months. They are raising it through their congregations or fundraisers. And one of the big sources of that was helpful this year was Empty Bowls, which is held in February. And they only raise money for the food pantries, and they raised forty-two thousand this year. That's the most they have ever raised. And I would like to point out that every single penny goes to the food pantries. And I'd like to point out, they have zero overhead, zero. All right? Now, getting back to raw statistics, the unemployment rate as of July, and this is from the Federal Reserve, is three point seven percent. That's nearly full employment, as you know. The national unemployment rate is four point three, so we're doing much better. So why do we have all these food pantries? Why do we need Resource Day? You hear people saying, pull yourself up by your, you know, bootstraps, get a job. What they don't understand is who we're all serving is the working poor and seniors. And this is who's coming through our food pantries, and this is why they need Resource Day. For instance, let me give you about minimum wage. Minimum wage is fifteen dollars an hour. That's great if you're a teenager scooping ice cream, okay? Not so great if you're one of the others. For instance, people working for landscaping companies, retail workers, people who are caretakers. You'd be surprised, people who are actually in homes taking care of our loved ones, often making fifteen dollars an hour. Now, let's get, tell you what kind of salary you're making on that. If you work, all right, a full year, never take a vacation, never have a sick day, you put in two thousand eighty hours a year, full employment, you will earn thirty-one thousand dollars. That's all. What is the cost to live in this county? One person, by the way, it's gone up since last year. One person after taxes, forty thousand six hundred and forty-six. And if you'll see, this is from MIT's Living Wage Calculator for this year. Family of four. Family of four with two working adults, 92,262 after taxes. See where that comes in, that 31,000? Let's take another segment, the seniors. 30% of the population in this county are seniors, all right? One in four seniors depends on social security for their income. Average social security check, $2,080 a month. That's $24,800 a year. Look at it again, 40,646 for a senior. That's tough, all right? And this is why something like Resource Day is needed. It helps our seniors and helps the working poor. Many in people in need do not realize the kind of help there is out there. And I'm just going to give you one example, which I had never known until actually found out last year, was that everybody knows that Habitat for Humanity builds houses. Did you know they repair houses? And they will come and put in a ramp, reattach a porch, whatever you need, they will do it, all right? There's also another great group that I then found out because of learning about Habitat called Bay 100. And what they do is they go around and they repair homes of people. You have to own your home. They don't do it for people who are renting, but you own your own home. We have talked to people coming through our pantries and gotten them that kind of help through that. So, that's the kind of help that is out there. But stop and think, if I'm not knowing this, can you imagine the general public not knowing this? Because I think I know everything, and I don't, it turns out, all right? But this Resource Day is a way to learn how to access and navigate the system. And I think most of you know, if you try to ever navigate the system, you actually do need help. This Resource Day gives them that opportunity. Once again, it is spearheaded by Neighborhood Service Center, the Talbot Family Network, Talbot County Hunger Coalition, Chop Tank Electric, Eastern Utilities, Talbot Public Schools, and the Department of Social Services. And we've been working since late spring. We always start in the spring, beginning on this. And I would like to introduce a couple of people who are here tonight with us and recognize the kind of hard work they do. So, I'm doing this alphabetically by last name. That's the best way to do it. I'm going to start with Ally Burke. Would you stand so people can see? This is Ally, and Family Investment Supervisor from Department of Social Services. And she's the one who gave me the correct statistics. Shalonda Collins, and Housing Coordinator for Planning and Zoning. Thank you. And Scotty Oliver, Assistant Director, Talbot County Library. Brandy Ridgway, MEAP Senior Intake Representative. If you don't know what MEAP is, like, I didn't. She had to teach me. Marilyn Energy Assistance Program. Thank you, Brandy. All right, and, oh, Ann Horn. Hey, I'm sorry, Amy Horn. All right. Executive Director of SMSCC. And by the way, it's her kitchen that's making the lunches, which is great, so thank you.
And we're helping with transportation, too.
Yes, that's right. You're going to have a van and probably, yeah, probably making two runs, right? Yes. And last but not least, and I say that with great affection because she's the mama bear. And moving forward, Cardina Robinson, MEAP Director of Neighborhood Service Center. So, I invite all of you on October 18th to drop by between 10:00 and 1:00 and see Resource Day in action. If you have any questions now, I'm happy to answer them.
Good job. Mr. Step?
Yep. No questions, but just, you know, just, again, thanks for doing this. It's always good to hear you. I love your fact sheet.
You love what?
I love your fact sheet. You always come armed with your facts.
Oh, that I do have.
I appreciate them. They are, they are, they're numbers to certainly be concerned about.
They are, I know, yeah.
Thank you for your presentation. It was very good. You've been a dedicated public servant for so many years and brought together this group, and it's fabulous. And we really need it. And I'm glad that the need was determined and that it is being fulfilled. It's great for our county. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Well, Catherine, you know, you do so much for this community. You are truly a rock star. I think that this Resource Day is going to be amazing compared to the ones in the past, particularly with the partnership with Delmarva Community Services and the bus transportation.
Right.
I mean, it's always a great event, but I think this is going to be even better because I think you're going to be able to get more people because of the transportation.
That's what we want.
Yeah. And so, you always have this on the weekend of my birthday. I don't know if I'll be there or not, but if I am in town and my husband doesn't do his job right, I'll be popping through and coming through, of course. You know, I have family members that, you know, need this assistance and come every year. And you know the one I'm talking about.
I know.
I won't call her name publicly. But it isn't, there is a need, and these statistics are great for us to have. And I love it when you come in.
I appreciate them.
Yeah. I love it when you come in and bring this and let us know where we are in Talbot County because there is a need. So, thank you for all you do. Thank you for your committee, everyone that's here with her that's supporting her. And I look forward to a great Resource Day on October the 18th.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, committee, for all you guys do. And it was just a pleasure last February being at the Empty Bowl.
Oh, wasn't that great?
I was there, and it was, it was really amazing. So, really good job with everybody that pitched in to do that. So, that was, that's pretty special.
Yeah.
That's for sure.
And the whole community pitched in, the restaurants, it was marvelous.
Yeah, it was great. So, I really appreciate that. And thank you, everybody. So, being that said, what do we need to do?
There's no proclamation. No, I just came to.
Okay, okay, okay.
Just to update you.
Okay. Next on the agenda is my favorite man up here. Come on up, you know? Come on up, Kevin. Yeah, yeah. He's something, he's something. He's going to give us an up-to-date on the school and the capital improvement plan. So, welcome, Kevin. How you doing?
Good, President Callahan.
Good, good.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, members of the council and staff. Thank you. So, once again, my favorite night of the year. I am here to present this year's capital improvement plan for Talbot County Public Schools. And so, I come before the council to request consideration of the submission to the state. It is an annual state submission to the IAC, the Interagency Commission for School Construction. And basically, it's the county's, Talbot County Public Schools' request to the state for funding for the related capital improvements. So, this evening, very brief presentation, just to outline some excerpts from the actual document, which you have the full document in your electronically. And this first slide is just an excerpt from the 102C, which is a request for systemic project funding. And this year's first and only priority is the replacement of the Eastern Middle School roof. And you can barely see it, but in pink there, we have a request from the state for $1,950,000 as their portion of the roof replacement. And this next slide provides a summary of the estimated budget. So, from right to left, the, in blue, you'll see the current request from the county council for this roof replacement would be 2.145 million from the state. Once again, the 1,950,000, and the total cost for the, estimated total cost for the roof replacement would be 4,950,000. And then, the final slide that I have for this evening is just a summary of future, of the current requests. This is priority number one, and then future requests, as we currently see them coming in future fiscal years. And I'm not going to go through that whole list. It does, it is a list that kind of evolves as we go. But ultimately, we are looking to do some HVAC replacements at various schools, a little more work at Eastern Middle School. And then, finally, just always like to draw attention to the eventual renovation of Eastern High School, which would be the next school for renovation now. We do have some years for that, but there will be a number, there will be a planning process that will probably take a few years. And so, I just want to kind of keep that on the horizons and then keep talking about it because it is going to be a heavy lift for the county once we eventually get there. So, as I said, brief, but I can certainly try and answer any questions. Just to fully disclose, I am going to, just like in previous years, I would be requesting that the council consider supporting the Eastern Middle School roof replacement request. This is not an obligation for funding at this point. Obviously, this is a submission to the state. We would be asking them for support. And then, once they do that, if they, if they do that, then, then it would come to the council as to whether or not they can fund at that time. So, this would be more towards the end of this year that we'd be looking for funding. So, right now, it's just a letter of support.
Okay. Okay. Council, any other questions for Kevin? So, okay, so, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion for a letter of support.
Okay.
Second?
Okay. We've got a motion second for the letter of support. Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Okay. Good job.
Very good. And just if you don't mind, very quickly, I just want to give a very brief update on Chapel. And I know that on October 7th, we're going to have a joint meeting with the board and the council. But I just want to kind of put it out there to the public so everybody's aware that Chapel project is going well, it's on budget and on schedule. And so, we're looking forward to the completion of that at the end of the school year. So, thank you, everybody.
Great job.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Next on the agenda is another update of the county real property tax. Martha, you want to come on up?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Martha Sparks, Finance Director for Talbot County. What you have here before you is a request that you receive each year for property, real property tax credits to various nonprofit organizations that own property in the county. For the 2025, 2026 tax year, the county has received these requests for property tax credits from the following organizations, Chesapeake Audubon Society, Chesapeake Wildlife Heritage, Commissioners of St. Michael's, Habitat for Humanity, Neighborhood Service Center, Spring Hill Cemetery, Talbot Ag Center, Talbot County, Maryland, Tuckahoe Steam and Gas Association, Waterfowl Festival. The request for credits on county real property taxes on these 32 parcels, total 48,922.78. That's down from the previous year, and the decrease is about 20,831. I request that the council approve the county real property tax credits on these properties.
Okay. Any questions, council?
Nope.
Nope. Motion to approve.
Second?
Okay. We've got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Okay. Great job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Now, we're on the Clay stuff. He's writing right now. Okay.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Under County Manager Report this evening, I have several things for you. We'll begin with committee, board and committee appointments, and then I have four items of business that I'd like to bring before you. The first under Board and Committee Appointments would be for the Adult Public Guardianship Review Board. We're recommending the appointment of Ms. Amanda Andrew.
Motion to approve the appointment.
Second?
Okay. We've got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Thank you, council. The next is the Commission on Aging. We're requesting the appointment of Ms. Wendy Palmer.
Motion to approve the appointment.
Second.
Okay. We've got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
Thank you, council. And finally, the Upper Shore Aging Board of Directors. We're requesting the appointment of Joanne Asparagus Murray to that board of directors.
So moved.
Yep. Second.
Okay. We have a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
And then, I'll ask Jeannie and Jeff to come up here.
Yep.
They have a request this evening for your consideration to send a letter to the Interstate Fishery Management Plan for Atlantic Strait bass. I'll let them explain it to you. Thank you.
Okay. Well, welcome. Welcome.
Can't explain it.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm Jeff Harrison of Tillman. I'm president of Talbot Waterman Association. Yeah. What's going on? The SMFC is requesting a 12% reduction in our harvest of strike bass, commercial people. And then, the charter boats, they're, they're actually trying to, they'll be hook and release from January 1st all the way to May, which we're totally against because those are spawning fish, and we don't want anybody messing with them. Right now, no one is. And then, they'll have a complete month off in August. And the charter industry in Talbot County took a big hit last year when the same group basically said that instead of being able to catch two fish at a charter, they could only catch one. And their charters are off, I think it's like 70%. I have a guy who has a charter alongside him. He's been out like maybe eight times this summer. And this final, this would probably put them out of business. So, we're asking for your help of a letter of opposition. We had a meeting last night at Y Mills. We're at the college, and it was well-attended, but, you know, everybody was in opposition, of course, to it. There was mostly fishermen, the commercial fishermen there. And there's another meeting tonight on the other shore in Annapolis. And there may be some people that are for that. Even the recreational people are against this. So, we're asking for your help. You know, it's a shame, my grandfather started a charter industry back in 1920. And my father ran charter, and I ran charter for a while. But, you know, for a family that really are fishermen, my quota now is 400 pounds of fish for the whole year. And that's going to be cut by 12% if this goes through, which it likely will. So, that's what's happening, you know, with the watermen, with the rockfish situation. So, we're asking for your help with this letter of opposition.
Sounds good. Okay.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Hadoe-Rikio. I work with the Talbot Waterman Association. I would just like to add that the, all of the other eastern shore counties have weighed in on this issue because it does impact, as Jeff said, the commercial industry, as well as the charter boat captains and recreational fisher people. And at the hearing last night, there were hundreds of people there. They asked for a show of hands, who was in favor of catching rockfish while they're spawning? There was only one hand that went up in that entire audience. And so, what we're really asking is that the Atlantic States Marine Fisheries Commission look at solutions that really get to the root of the problem. After all of this, they told us last night that they believe there's a 30% to 50% probability that these proposals will actually work. Once these jobs are gone and these boats are gone, there's a 100% probability that they're not coming back. So, we just would like for them to go back to the drawing board and bring some better solutions.
So, Jeff, how, what's their calculation on the 12%? How'd they come up with 12%?
Well, they actually, there's a bunch of, you know, they could take 20%.
Yeah.
The probability when they take 12%, I think is like 40% of chance that they'll reach what they, what they're trying to do is save the spawning fish.
Okay.
So, they put a slot in there. In 2018, we had a really big spawn here in the bay. So, they're trying to save those fish. And those fish right now already are spawning fish. But they're trying to save even more fish. It's really ridiculous, is what it is. What they did is they moved the benchmark up, the target up, back in 2018 when they had this big spawn because they wanted to save some of those fish. But the problem is, is that's really not obtainable. That's what they're trying to attain right now. And they even said themselves, they didn't even know if they would be able to do it. And yet, we're paying the and yet we're paying the cost for that. You know, you go fishing now, and the slot is 19 to 24 right now. Most of the fish I catch are over that now, so, you know, you're hooking a lot of fish and releasing them, and a certain amount of them are gonna die anyway. So what are we accomplishing, you know? What are we really doing? And one of the questions that was asked last night is, well, what's our goal, you know, when we get to this number, this magic number that you want? Are you gonna allow us to catch more fish? They are never gonna allow us to catch any more fish, I can tell you that. You, from now on, you're gonna have one fish recreational, which isn't enough for me to feed my, me and my wife, by the way.
No.
No.
Yeah.
And that's how it's gonna be, and the real goal for Maryland is to make it a game fish, which means no commercial harvest, and you'll never be able to keep one. And that's the CCA, that's their goal, and they're in with the DNR now, and that's where all of this is coming from. So, you know, they're totally against commercial fishermen, and they've worked their way into Maryland, and now they're right in the DNR, and we're in trouble. And right now, they're, I've seen as high as forty charter boats in Tillman. You know, it says it's a fishing village. We have three charter boats in Tillman now, and like I said, one of them has been out ten times this year, and they cannot afford to stay in business, you know?
Yeah.
So, it's a shame.
Okay, thanks for that update. So, okay, do we have, so?
It's an easy motion.
That, that is, yeah.
Definitely is. I make the motion to support the letter to Secretary Kurtz at the DNR.
Yep.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to go ahead and with a support letter. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hay? Aye.
Will you guys keep us up to date? Appreciate you coming in, but.
I also wanna thank you all for naming us your superheroes. Now that we make this conference in Ocean City, we had a good time, and I hope Pete didn't still out because of his shucking axe.
I got you.
So, thank you all.
Okay, thank you guys for coming.
So the minutes will reflect your concern to Pete.
That will soon. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Uh, thank you, council. The next one I'm gonna read a little bit to you, so just bear with me, I know. So, "Presentation of Letters of Interest SFY 26 Community Development Block Grant CDBG Program." So as you read your agenda packet, "Upon notification, the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development of the opening of CDBG process. Talbot County has made aware that we have a grant opportunity for local nonprofits who's, to seek letters of support and interest," I'm sorry, "letters of interest. Six nonprofits in Talbot County Planning and Zoning submitted letters of interest to partner with the county with requests totaling over $2.2 million. One nonprofit letter withdrew their request. Talbot County is eligible to apply for $800,000 that are, that would be available. After reviewing the letters of interest, DHCD staff, with, with the DHCD staff, we are proposing to partner with the following organizations. The first is Building African American Minds, BAM. The second is the Neighborhood Service Center, and the third is St. Michael's Community Center. The CDBG applications are due to DHCD on Friday, October 24th. County staff will return to the council on October 14th, 2025, to present the applications and to hold the required public hearing and to present an administrative resolution for consideration." I'd like to take a minute just to recognize both Mary Kay Verteri and Jessica Morris, who have worked really tirelessly on this grant program. This is an opportunity every year to help, help our community, and we have success stories. This grant, again, has opened up for $800,000 that is available. It is a very challenging application pro, pro, process, and it appears at this point, after talking to DHCD, these three organizations would be reasonable to send up for their consideration. Once they, once they scrutinize the, their interest, then we can move forward with a more arduous process. But I'll kinda yield to Jessica, do you have anything that you'd like to add to this?
Not at this time.
Okay, so council, I just need your approval to partner with these, to send these three organizational names up to DHCD, and then we'll be back to you on October 14th.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion approved. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hay? Aye.
Okay, thank you, council. I asked Ray Clark, your county engineer, to come forward. The first item that he's gonna speak to you about is follow-up to the work session we had with the representatives from the community of Claiborne, and this is about the PER that you authorized that we move forward with. So Ray, I'll hand it to you.
Counsel, again, we utilized our, I guess, open-ended engineering services agreement, where we have, I guess, RAO Incorporated, Lane Engineering, as well as Davis, Davis Bond for Dallas, Century Engineering, and Wallace Montgomery. And typically, what we try to do is spread the work around, but at the same time, we try to look at where who, who's got the strength, strengths in certain areas. And one of the things I would say, RAO does have some strengths, is it relates to preliminary engineering reports, and we've used them in the past for the Barnet Fairbank preliminary engineering report. They did the Preserve at Wy Mills preliminary engineering report. So we ended up going to them, and we got a price for $29,814.75 to do the preliminary engineering report for the Claiborne Water System, so we're seeking your all's approval on that.
And council, these funds would come from contingency, and Martha Sparks, our Finance Director, has confirmed that sufficient funds are available in the contingency item.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hay? Aye.
And the next item Ray Clark is going to ask you about is consideration to award change order number two to bid number 2309, Goldsboro Neck and Cleve Road Culvert Replacement, Easton, Maryland, Talbot County. And Ray, I'll hand it to you.
Sure thing. Counsel, again, I believe it was on September 16th, an email was forwarded to me, and I guess Clay, we have been working with Brian Moore, the road supervisor for Talbot County, and ultimately has noted that there is a, like, imminent danger that the culverts could fail on, at Chapel Road. So with that being said, we initiated a meeting with the Maryland Department of the Environment to discuss basically what's referred to as a post-permit action. So the post-permit allows us to move forward with the design and construction without securing the permit upfront, and then we go back and get the permit after it's been constructed. To do that, we met with an MDE, and we would have to go with a bottomless culvert to do this post-permit, so we did that. We then reached out to David A. Bramble. I will note that David A. Bramble did the bottomless culvert for Dutchman's Lane back in 2000, and I believe it was in 2016, and that culvert pretty much cost about a million dollars. Again, the bottomless culverts tend to be a little more expensive, 'cause you have to put in a foundation for the, the precast structure to go into place. Working with David A. Bramble, we basically worked very quickly to get a proposal from them. They did come back with a proposal for $1,379,483 to go ahead and do that culvert replacement for Chapel Road.
I'd like to just piggyback on what Ray shared and relay some information from Brian Moore, your roads superintendent. This, this Chapel Road, as you know, is a primary county road, carries a lot of traffic. This section of Chapel Road is vulnerable if we were to have a significant rain event or hurricane for a partial collapse of the road, and eventually an eventual collapse, and so we, we need to move forward on this quickly, in his opinion, and of course Ray's as well. Secondly, as far as procurement, but the procurement, we are currently under contract with, with Bramble, and Bramble's agreed to hold the unit pricing on this existing competitively bid contract for a change order in order to expedite the work to be done.
Okay. Okay, is, is there a motion?
So moved, yeah.
Okay.
Second.
Yep, we got a motion second to move forward on the culvert replacement. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Aye.
Ms. Hay? Aye.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Ray.
Yes.
Ray, real quick, why don't we open up that Goldsboro Neck Road?
We, the good news right now is that we were looking at opening it before Thanksgiving. We are getting word right now that we could open it probably by, at this point in time, November 4th. We are moving as quickly as we can. We are trying also to have, if we can get Verizon in, we're hoping that they'll be in the, into the area this week, along with Eastern Utilities. That could actually shorten it up a little bit if they get their work done. We are moving fast on that project, and we will be, to avoid any issues, any further, you know, let's say, road construction issues. We are working with David A. Bramble to go ahead and move into Villa Road and do the work on Villa Road, so a lot of this could be wrapped up, like I said, by early November, so. Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Counsel, thank you. We have a lot of exciting projects underway. Looking forward to bringing a number of them to completion.
Yep.
Just a reminder, on the 29th of, of September, next Monday night, or Monday afternoon at 4:30, there's gonna be a groundbreaking across from the Chapel School for the North EMS Station, so anyone that wants to stop out there and join council, there'll be breaking the ground. Everyone's quite excited about that. But thank you, as always, for your support, and this concludes your County Manager Report.
Okay, thank you, good job. Okay, next on the agenda is a public comment. Do we have, we don't, nobody, no sign up sheet, okay. Anybody wanna come? We don't, well, I have two now. Jeannie? Good. My, my main man back there, you need, you, you good back there? Good, okay, okay. All right, next would be council comments. Mr. Step?
Good.
Good, okay.
I would like to eulogize Judge Norris. I met him 46 years ago in this room, and he was the district court judge, believe it or not, this was a district court once upon a time, and also, I was acquainted with him through Miles River Yacht Club, as I was race committee for law canoe races. So I knew him for a good 10 years in that capacity, and of course, he is a brilliant contributor to antique cars and classic cars, and was very well-known for that, and we will miss him greatly. He had a lot of positive effect on this community, and he will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, yep.
No comments tonight?
No comment, okay.
Good meeting.
Yeah, great meeting. Appreciate the good work, staff, that's for sure. Okay, Mr. Step?
So the County Council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 14th, beginning at 5:00 PM. The council will be convening in open session at 2:30 PM for our annual meeting with our local delegation, which is open to the public, and then adjourning in a closed session, as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. On Tuesday, September 30th, 2025, the County Council will be built, will be holding a work session at 4:00 PM in the Bradley Meeting Room to discuss the feasibility study for the Welcome Center with Cassandra Van Hooser, Director of Economic Development and Tourism, followed by a 5:00 PM meeting with the elected officials from the towns. The 5:00 PM meeting will be held in the Talbot County Free Library, Eastern Branch Meeting Room, and is open to the public. On Tuesday, October 7th, 2025, the County Council will be, will be meeting with the Board of Education at 5:00 PM at the Chapel District Elementary School. Therefore, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene as noted?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. We got a motion second. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Ms. Milky?
Yes.
Okay, thanks a lot.